Okay. We'll get that.
Oh, you did, huh?
Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. We'll get our meeting called to order. I'd like to thank everybody for joining us. We have a number of very special presentations and this evening commemorates Mr. Phillips's last board meeting with us. He served eight very, very long, wonderful years. And we are wonderful years. And we are very pleased that we're able to celebrate this evening with you. And we're happy that the rest of you are here to join us in celebrating this evening with Mr. Phillips as well. We have someone special in our audience today, Ms. Wendy Phillips, Greg's wife. And with that, we'll do roll call, and then we have a very special roll call.
Very quickly, all board members are here.
Wonderful. Mrs. Phillips and Mr. Phillips are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Oh, we get our very special presentations. I'll let Dr. Wall introduce.
We have very special state champions in the audience and their parents. So first of all, welcome, congratulations, and thank you for taking time out of your busy holiday schedule to be with us tonight. Jim Inskeep, Athletic Director at Carmel High School will do the honors. And just for protocol, I'll meet you over there, student athletes, giving you a certificate, congratulating you, and then the board will want to recognize you after we have the whole team recognized. And then when we have our break between now and the other part of our agenda, Jennifer Schwab, give a little, our community relations liaison, will be meeting all the state champions in B3 for photos at the gap when we take a break, okay? So that's kind of the protocol. So without further ado, we have the state champion cheerleaders with us this evening. Jimmy?
Thank you, Dr. Wall and members of our school board. It is an honor and a privilege to be in front of you this evening to introduce three state championship teams from a very highly successful athletic season for our Greyhounds this year. Our first group are competition cheerleaders who competed on November 8th at Southport High School at the IISP State Championships. There are two different competitions associated with that, and these young ladies were state champions in the timeout division, which is a fairly new competition in the state championship competition at Southport. So they did a great job that day. It was an honor to be there and cheer them on. And their head coach, Lisa Nipp, is here to tell you a little bit about that and introduce who's with her today.
Thank you, Mr. Inskeep, Dr. Walls, and members of the board. We thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening, and welcome to our cheerleading parents for coming out and being with us and celebrating another state championship for Carmel High School cheerleading. At this time, I would like to introduce one of my assistant coaches, Coach Amy Duke, right here, who is also one of your fabulous bus drivers within the school system. Or Melissa. Amy's the sister. Melissa Duke, excuse me. So yes, Melissa's one of your best drivers, and she was instrumental in our success this year. So I don't want to go any further without acknowledging and recognizing her as well. We have a few representatives with us this evening, as many of them are at home studying for their final exams. We do have Ellen Clark with us this evening. We have Rachel Dixon, Amy Smith, and Kylie Sutton. Thank you, Mr. Inskeep.
Our next group this evening are members of our Girls Cross Country program. The Girls Cross Country program repeated as state champions this year with a dominant performance. They just returned a couple weeks ago from a competition in Portland, Oregon, where they competed in the Nike National Championships there against the best teams in the nation, placing third, the best finish ever for Carmel High School. And we're here this evening. We're here this evening to recognize their state championship, which was on November 1st at the Laverne Gibson Course in Terre Haute. And this group dominated the field once again. And if you ever travel up and down Main Street between 4:00 and 5:00 o'clock, you see them running literally like a pack of Greyhounds. And they run just like that in the races as a pack together, and those numbers turn out very well for them. We're very, very proud of all the hard work that they put in and their parents as well. With us this evening is their head coach, Mark Ellington, a teacher at Clay Middle School, who will introduce his student athletes with him this evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to recognize these very dedicated high school students. They are seven of 133 girls that participate on our team each year. We've had between 125 and 135 the last five years. So they get to represent an awful lot of the student body at Carmel High School. Without further ado, Kelsey Harris, Megan Cress, Haley Harris, Madeline Dalton, Sarah Leinheiser, Anna Schmitz, and Stacy Morozov.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Dr. Town.
Our last team we're recognizing this evening is our volleyball team. If we could have them come forward at this time with their assistant coach, Stacy Fogelman. The Lady Greyhounds did something this year that was a first, and we don't get to do first very often sometimes. And that's very, very exciting and very special. And this group of young ladies won the first state championship for our volleyball program in Carmel High School's history. They've been at the state finals each of the last three years, and this year just kept getting better as the tournament went on. And played with a lot of confidence and just a lot of fun to watch that state championship match on November 8th at Ball State University in a big win over Cathedral. So without further ado, I'm going to have Stacy come up here. Stacy is a Carmel High School graduate as well.
Our head coach and our other three assistants cannot be here tonight. And we also have some ladies on the team who are practicing now on their travel teams and some who just came from practice to be here tonight. The rest are studying. So we do have four of them here tonight, and thank you so much for your support and for all of your encouragement over the year. We've got Megan Flatley, and we have Jamie Sherb, Hannah Coslow. Hannah set a state record this year for the most ace serves in a high school match. And we have Alex Hicks.
Okay, we have a very special spotlight this evening, and we want a spotlight for Carmel Clay Schools, a spotlight on excellence, Mr. Greg Phillips. As Leila indicated, this is Greg's last board meeting after eight years of serving the Carmel Clay School community. He's done so with, I would say, integrity, forthrightness, ability to see things and allow for all of us to grow from his perspective, his insights, and experiences not only with Carmel Clay Schools, but his life experience as well. That service to the Carmel Clay School community and to fellow board members has been done in a way with respect and integrity and a model of civil discourse that we're all very proud of. This evening, on behalf of Carmel Clay School District, Mr. Phillips, we're awarding you a district-wide lifetime activity pass. So anytime you want to go, we'd love to see you at any and all events for Carmel Clay Schools, as well as a little thing to put on your bookshelf because you're a re-tenant. Do you want to come out and talk to your husband?
Well, I want to thank Dr. Wall and Leila and all of my other colleagues for a very pleasant surprise. I had no idea I'd be featured like this. I did have just a brief set of remarks, and it will be very brief, so don't blank or you'll miss. I want to give thanks to Carmel's citizens who allowed me to serve on this board. This has been the greatest honor of my life to sit with these people and to work with them to preserve, protect, and promote the fine education afforded to Carmel students. I want to give thanks to CCEA, the Carmel Clay Education Association, for inviting me to run for this office and for their generous and energetic support in helping me to get elected. The CCEA pledged to respect my independence on the board. They have been true to that pledge through my entire eight-year tenure. I'm very pleased and proud that CCEA leaders have stepped up to the challenge of finding new ways to work together with other school leaders to resolve issues of mutual interest. I want to give thanks to our administrators, led by Dr. Wall, and including especially Roger and Amy and Ryan, for their leadership, their energy, and their unflagging professionalism. They and the many solid professionals supporting them make a board member's job relatively easy and overall a real pleasure. Finally, I want to give thanks to my fellow board members for their passion for public education and for Carmel Clay Schools. Thanks also for the gentle reproofs when necessary and for the good-hearted friendship always. I'll miss you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Greg, I have some words to share about you as well. Over the last eight years, we've accomplished a number of wonderful things, great things in our school system, none of which would have been possible without the contributions of many, including your steadfast leadership on the board. You've been an advocate for teachers, for our students. You've been fiscally sound in all of the decisions that you've made, and you've been a listening and a reasonable guide through some muddy waters at times. On behalf of the students, the faculty, the greater Carmel community, along with each of our current and past board members that have been able to serve with you, we thank you for your selfless dedication to our school system, and we wish you the very best in your future endeavors. So thank you so very much.
Leila, can I say, I just, Greg, I just want to take this opportunity just to say a few things. Of the six years I've served on the board, you've been here for every single one of them. And I don't know if you remember, but one of your very first pieces of advice to me was always check your policy. And I've kept that in the front of my mind ever since. I thought that was extremely sound advice. Greg has admirable love of youth and education for each and every child. He's always there to make sure every child is educated to their potential and wants to make sure that every teacher is an integral part of that process, that gets that opportunity. As you can tell from how we opened the beginning of the meeting, you can't talk about Greg without mentioning his wife, Wendy Phillips, the director of our public library. He's very proud of his wife and the years that she serves in her position, supporting the education of our youth. So I thank you for your countless hours, Greg, for the youth in our community. They're in a better place because of the years you've put in here. Thanks.
I wanted to say that I've known you these eight years was very instrumental in helping to get you elected during your first term. And I'm very glad that I was part of that to get you on the board. I found you to be a very kind person, a very respectful person. I felt very welcomed when I became part of the board four and a half years ago. Hard to believe it was four and a half. I found you willing to listen to my opinions. You were very open-minded. You worked for what is fair and right. You worked to enhance the relationships in the buildings and with staff and administration, especially CCEA. That's been a passion of yours. I will miss your thoughtful emails, your words of wisdom, and wish you all the best in your retirement.
Greg, I'm going to extemporaneously speak here because I never plan anything. Okay. I also with Pam would like to thank you. I remember celebrating with you upon your election to the school board eight years ago and how excited we were to have someone with your level-headedness and your willingness to listen elected to the board. And you gave the teachers a sense of comfort knowing that you were here. We also knew that you were your own person, you were going to do what was best for students. But just knowing that we had someone that would listen and who would make wise decisions on the board was a bit of a comfort for everyone. You've been a wonderful example since I came on the board of level-headedness. You've done very good keeping me focused, and I'm going to have to help Mike do the same. But you are an inspiration to everyone, and we appreciate your years of service and wish you much luck in your retirement and your travels, and hopefully you'll come back and see us again. Thank you, Greg.
With that, we are going to take a small break and allow students to head home to, excuse me, to study for finals. I think there's one or two tomorrow. But before you leave, please report to B3 for a group picture with Jennifer. And with that, have a very safe and wonderful holiday break with your families, and we'll resume our meeting in about three, four minutes. Okay, we'll get started. Seeing that we do not have anybody signed up for public participation, we'll move straight into consent. May I get a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of consent signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. Then we're moving on to our first action item, which is the approval of the First Amendment to additional terms of contract with Dr. Nicholas Wall. We have, coming to you by me, we had Dr. Walls, three parts of Dr. Walls' current contract we are amending, and that was included, we had a public partis, or a public hearing as well as, well, posting in our public hearing. And we did not have any feedback at all, positive or negative. So I think everybody's in support of what we have proposed. So with that, may I get a motion on the table to approve the First Amendment?
Thank you.
Greg.
Did you second before I made the motion?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to move approval of the First Amendment to Dr. Wall's terms of contract.
Thank you very much. May I get a second?
Second.
I think it actually was Tricia.
Second.
Discussion. Wonderful. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the establishment of our board meetings. We had posted those before. Couple interesting remarks that I'd like to make is that in May, we'll have our single meeting. July, we will also have a single meeting because we will be meeting for a board retreat. So we will essentially have two board meetings. And we will have, as we are this year, a single meeting in December. The Tuesday, or the September meeting, instead of being on a Monday, that'll be shifted to a Tuesday to commemorate or to respect some religious holidays. And with that, may I get a motion on the table to approve the workshop and regular session dates that we have assigned for 2015?
I move to accept the regular scheduling meetings as presented.
May I get a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And Dr. Wall, as we move on to reports.
Thank you, Leila. We have middle school program evaluation report this evening for the Board of Education. This is a culmination of a little over a year's work of teachers, administrators, talking to some parent-focused groups, student-focused groups, and must be made note, this was a district committee representing elementary, middle school, and high school level, teachers and administrators, to look at how we do this thing called middle school in Carmel Clay Schools at Clay, Creekside, and Carmel Middle respectively. It's exciting tonight to have the teachers and administrators presenting their findings. And what I'd like to do is just kind of go over, Dana, I might just get this button here, and I got it. Yeah. There we go. There we go. Who's got the toggle control? Hmm? I don't have it. Jessica, would you, would you see if there's a remote up there?
If you want it, I can get it.
Jessica.
There's some inside.
She is in control. Jessica has displayed leadership in the initiative during this middle school.
I would love to bring the remote.
During this middle school program evaluation model.
Really blushing.
In one of our presentations, Jessica just happened to have the remote. Thank you, Jessica. What we have done, as we've done with all the things we've looked at, it's a student-centered approach to how we're doing what we're doing. I just want to focus on the circle, research and information and standards alignment. It was really critical in this process to make sure that we allowed the committee to look at best practice in middle school-age curriculum and extracurricular opportunities, as well as talk to other middle schools, not only in the area, but I know during the time of this middle school program evaluation, we had members of the committee attending the National Middle School Conference as well. To also tap into that National Middle School experience, as well as committee members serving on the state national, excuse me, the state middle school board. Jessica, I believe you're on that board this year. Thank you for representing Carmel Clay Schools. I know Tom has, through Advanced Ed, been on the board and other areas too, of looking at continuous improvement models. So with that said, we wanted to focus on the student, as we've done before, looking at how we can best improve student achievement and well-being of our students. The model we put in front of the board last year and the committee was to look at this in phases. And it was very important that when we looked at these phases, that we were mindful of the fact that we had to look at a student-centered approach with the student well-being, the student achievement, and the organizational structures as the focused areas for this process. We had a findings report in May. that we had to look at a student-centered approach with the student well-being, the student achievement, and the organizational structures as the focused areas for this process. We had a findings report in May, and as we sit here today on timeline, we're to look at those findings in December to see what the next steps are. With that, I would like, Amy, if you could introduce the members of that committee that are with us this evening, teachers and administrators alike, and they're going to be presenting this evening.
Thank you. We have a large group of teachers and administrators that have worked very hard. And this is just a small group of our committee. And our teachers that will be representing us tonight are Stephanie Sorchin-Dreuber, media specialist at Clay Middle School; Jennifer Carson, social studies teacher at Creekside; Liz Wagner, humanities teacher at Carmel Middle School; Chris Bartley, science teacher at Creekside; Erin Nos, guidance counselor at Clay Middle School; Tammy Velvatosky, language arts teacher at Carmel Middle School; and Bill Buckman, math teacher at Carmel, or at Clay Middle School. And then our administrators that are in the audience too, they'll be here to answer any questions that you might have, as well as our teachers. We have Dr. Tom Harmis at Creekside, we have Mr. Todd Crosby at Clay Middle School, Mrs. Lila J. at Carmel Middle School, Ms. Jessica Tubbs at Creekside, Mrs. Trudy Young at Carmel Middle School, and Ms. Lori Katz at Clay, and Mr. Mark Smith at Clay Middle School as well. I think I got everybody. So if I'm going to turn it over to Stephanie?
Thank you, Dr. Wall, and the board as well. In January of this year, a committee consisting of forty teachers, administrators, and support staff from the elementary, middle, and high school levels began examining the middle school model currently in place in Carmel Clay Schools. The larger committee was divided into three subcommittees tasked with researching the three areas of the student-centered model that you'll see on the PowerPoint, which includes student well-being, student achievement, and organizational structures. After researching best practices and adolescent development for all three areas, each subcommittee's findings were presented to the entire committee in May. During Phase Two of this evaluation, the committee created overarching priorities and operationalized those priorities into the plan being presented today. Phase Three of this evaluation will focus on professional development for all staff throughout the spring semester in preparation for implementation next fall at the start of the 2015-16 school year. So as mentioned, as a group, we did extensive research into the components of exemplary middle schools. And several key findings came to the forefront. First, the ability to have flexibility in the structure of the school day fosters high achievement in students. It is vital that students be known as individuals by the adults in the building in a safe environment. And this knowledge of students as individuals allows students to be more involved and invested personally in their learning, thus making their learning more engaging and purposeful.
So from these major research findings, it became readily apparent that there were six overarching priorities for our committee that were going to go forward in the next phase of our decision-making. The first being large blocks of flexible time were integral in the process, as well as time to meet the students of social, emotional, and academic needs. Time to build relationships with students was obviously an important part of this as well. And time also, within the school day, for teachers to collaborate became a high priority. Finally, the idea of giving opportunities to allow for interdisciplinary study was also important, as well as providing a curriculum that was exploratory, as well as challenging and relevant to our students. So from that, we started to establish that we had some key changes that we needed to go ahead and look at. One of those would be that our structure needed to change in order to provide interdisciplinary teams for our students to group them in a different way. Another for those would be that our schedule would need to provide larger blocks of flexible time so that students and teachers alike could be able to build more meaningful relationships. That social and emotional time needed to be better embedded within our school day. And finally, teacher collaboration time absolutely also needed to be embedded within our school day as well.
So as we looked at interdisciplinary teams and the reasons why, the power of those teams seems to be that there is higher student achievement, greater parental contact and involvement, and a positive school climate. But also positive attitudes from all stakeholders, because it really becomes a school within a school. And with this, adults have an increased opportunity to really get to know these students and then become their advocates. So if we consider how, there would be five teachers on a team. Each team would, each team would have five groups of students. Individual class sizes would be slightly larger, but students would maintain the two periods of electives that they currently have.
In terms of aligning these interdisciplinary teams with our overarching priorities, we found that it met five of the six areas that we had outlined. Specifically, interdisciplinary teaming would allow for stronger relationships to be built for the social and emotional well-being of the students, as well as their academic side. In addition, teaming structure would allow for better integration and collaboration of the curriculum among our staff members as well.
The final of the six overarching priorities that hasn't been talked about yet is a structure that we could put in place that was going to allow for flexible time. Definition of flexible time, I think simply stated, allowing teachers to use time within the school day to flex towards the needs of students within the team structure. It allows interdisciplinary teams to be able to provide for better learning experiences for our students. Pre-teaching, re-teaching, enrichment opportunities, student collaboration. Extended study, less choppy lesson planning, as I think a lot of us know, based on the structure that we're in right now, our lesson planning sometimes gets cut off by the bell. We, if we go to a more flexible, large blocks of time, allows for extended study. And less transitions during the school day. I know that, that really helps out with management of large groups of students in our buildings. Less transition between classes and helps manage, manage kids a little bit better in discipline. What does that look like? How, how do we achieve this? And we spent a lot of time this summer, and even the beginning of this school year, this first semester, really looking at hashing out what this large blocks of time is going to look like for not only our students, but then also our staff. You have in front of you, call it a sample, student day, whether you're a sixth grader, a seventh grader, or an eighth grader. As was previously mentioned, teams of, teams of five classes. Your language arts, your science, social studies, math, and PE as a part of a five-person team. But then also, you can see in either one of the grade level schedules, you see a core plus time. And that will be talked about a little bit more later on in the presentation. You also see, it's highlighted in a, in a blue and a red color. Those would be blocks of time in which our students would be spending in their elective classes. Each class period roughly ninety-one minutes long. Five different lunches, which I know for our schedulers at the middle school level, that it's not a bad thing. That's going to be a good thing for them. Six lunches is really tough to schedule. And also, I think it's important to note that there is some time worked into the schedule at the beginning and the end of the days so that we can do things such as announcements, student checkout. We have some students that check out towards the end of the day. There is, I've been calling it buffer time, where we can meet the special needs of some of those groups of students. A teacher workday, in regards to a core teacher or an elective teacher, would look like this. We looked at the student's schedule beforehand. A teacher's schedule, core on the left, elective teacher on the right. Five core classes, plus the core plus class in which we would be meeting with kids every single day if you are a core teacher. I also want to point out that one of the things that we really wrestled with was the prep and collaboration component of our, of our schedule as far as teachers and elective teachers are concerned. We really felt like it was important to set up a structure in which teachers not only would get a personal prep time every day, but then also embedded within that time would be in a collaborative time period in which teams of teachers can meet, grade levels can meet, grade-level departments can meet for that embedded professional development that really came through in our research. Embedded within the school day so that we had an opportunity to collaborate and work on, work on students, teams, whatever that might be. In addition, when you look at an elective teacher's schedule, you notice a lot of the same similarities. Prep built in every single day for our elective teachers, as well as a collaborative component as well. And as Jessica says, we're giving lunch to every teacher every day, so that's a good thing. What this also allows us to do, and it really came through in the research, it just happened to be part of a group that I was in, really expanding and allowing for a structure to really expand exploratory options for our students. We know as middle-level learners, we really, we wanted to be able to provide a structure in which they were going to be able to expand and really explore based on their interests. In collaboration with World Language Program Evaluation, and with hopefully the rolling out of Avid at our middle schools in a follow, not this coming year, but hopefully the following year. We've really been able to provide a structure in which we can continue to look at options for more of an exploratory elective model at the middle school, and this structure provides for that.
So as Chris has noted, these flexible blocks of time met all of our priorities and became an extremely high priority as well for our committee as we reached our goals. By giving teachers the opportunity to collaborate and plan for the best uses of time with students, flexible blocking truly could revolutionize the way that we approach professional development in our buildings. The community actually thinks that flexible time should be able to provide more of an integrated approach to our curriculum and definitely provide an opportunity for stronger relationships with our students as well.
One of the most common themes recurring in our research was the importance of social-emotional learning and establishing relationships between students and school staff at the middle school level. Social-emotional learning can be summarized as guiding students in setting goals and supporting them as they take the steps to meet those goals. And in doing so, considering the developmental level of our middle school students. Support for recognizing emotions, managing emotions, as well as establishing positive relationships, peer relationships, adult relationships, and making positive decisions are all components that are necessary that we teach and support at the middle school level. Our schedule, our proposed schedule allows for flexible time to establish these relationships, to support our students. In turn, students are gaining a sense of safety, a sense of community and spirit within their school. Research indicates that achievement scores then increase, as well as attendance, while discipline and behaviors decrease. So you can see many different examples here of what might take place during this flexible time. But ultimately, it's a time where team teachers and student services staff can work with students, whether it be one-on-one, in small group, or in a classroom, or even building-wide, or grade-level setting.
The social-emotional component of our research did establish four of our six priorities. And our current schedule does provide opportunities for student academic success. However, we feel that the social-emotional side of these students right now is being balanced in largely in the after-school hours, or sometimes outside of the academic setting. We feel that our new structure will allow for the better supports mentioned by Erin that our students can have embedded throughout the entire school day.
So teacher collaboration time, why? This is a really exciting possibility for us because with a core-plus block of time each day, we're going to be on our toes to be sure that we are providing kids with the different kinds of needs that, that will help them through this student-centered approach. Did I do something wrong here? Yeah, okay. And as mentioned in the social-emotional learning component, we're focusing on the whole child. And then we move on to teacher collaboration time, how? Do I need to, there we go. And there's a nice list here of different possibilities for spending that time. So it's not as if every day's collaboration time would be the same. We have a lot of different options here. A couple of the ones that, that jump out at me right now, when we have collaboration with an instructional coach, that's a wonderful opportunity, but often that means after school, or it means a half-professional day, so we're away from our students. Another one that really jumps out at me is the collaborative planning. With our new curriculum in eighth-grade language arts, we're working with Writer's Workshop. And for example, our first quarter major assessment dealt with narrative nonfiction. Well, several science teachers at the eighth-grade level in our school have just had their students write little books about waves and share them with the edicare students in our school, which provided some, for some great interaction. But in realizing that, I can see how in the future, we could extend what we do in first quarter with narrative nonfiction, and that could carry over to science. And so we have a lot of really exciting possibilities here in just different creative ways to use this time.
Going back to our priorities, we found that collaboration time aligned with five of our six overarching priorities. In our current structure, collaboration does happen, but it happens at random intervals, often after school. We feel that interdisciplinary units like the one Tammy mentioned and integrated curriculum approaches are going to certainly increase by providing that planning time within the school day for teachers to naturally meet with other colleagues. In order for our proposal to best work though, certain key points must be in place. One of those is that redistricting happened within the next school year in order to better balance our three middle schools. In addition, we feel that five-man teams require each teacher to only teach one content area, which would shift some of the teaching load right now. And that interdisciplinary units can be able to cross over all curriculums, so we would definitely want to be able to integrate that among both core teachers and elective teachers alike.
With the shift in the schedule, we thought about what kind of professional development the staff might need in order to be successful with this shift. And the good thing is, a lot of the things that, that we've been talking about, and a lot of the professional development that we already have, will be able to be built into the schedule. I know that some of the focuses at Clay, and I'm sure at the other middle schools, are differentiation and engagement. So it's just going to be a matter of taking the things we're already focusing on and building them into a different type of structure. So one of the things that we thought would be important to focus on was how to teach on a block schedule. We talked about, like, right now, we feel that things are choppy as we go from one, one period to the next. So how can we take a longer block of time and use it effectively with middle school students? We talked about having team protocols. So with, with the new time within, within the day, how do we best maximize that time with teachers in order to benefit students? We've also talked about interdisciplinary units. Just to echo what Tammy said, there's been multiple times where students have come into my room from a science class, and they've picked up on something in that class that I could have tied into the math curriculum, and I do when, when they bring it to my attention. But just how much more powerful that would be if we could plan together and teach the same standard and let the kids, kids go deeper with that standard. And then also, just addressing the social and emotional needs of the students. So using that core-plus time, and how we can build that family within the teams that we, that we hope to create within the school day.
So one last time, those overarching priorities. As far as flexible blocks of time, we feel that our new schedule does provide for that. Time to meet the students' needs, all of them, not just the academic ones. Time for people to collaborate, teachers, students alike. Hopefully also opportunities for interdisciplinary study to create a stronger, more relevant curriculum. Our committee wants to thank Dr. Wall and the School Board, Carmel Clay Schools, for the opportunity to evaluate this process. the opportunity to evaluate this process. Our current practices in middle school research today, the result we hope will be an opportunity to provide better support and services for our students at the middle level, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Ideas?
I know the board has sent dozens of questions on to Dr. Wall, and I know that they would like to continue to ask additional questions, so I will open this up to the board.
Kathy?
Having been a member of the high school staff when we went to block, I'm glad to see that you've thought about training for how to teach on the block because that will be a very important part of the process. I noticed the core-plus time is somewhat similar to what we can call SRT at the high school, and I notice you have it at the end of the day, and one of the big concerns at the high school was always that if we have it at the end of the day, the students will leave early and they will actually miss out on this opportunity. Was there any discussion given to that when you were talking about its placement, or was that just for sake of a slide, it may not necessarily be at the end of the day?
I'd go to the mic, but I think that I can talk loud enough. I think that that's a good point. For the sake of what we were showing, it was shown there, but really, I think that one of the cool things about the schedule is that, that core-plus time in any of the other blocks of classes where the kids are going to be on teams can be flexible to be moved around based on, based on student need. We might, we might need to get the whole school together at the beginning of the day, and we might be able to move, you know, allow for the movement of that, but that was one of the things that we had talked about originally when we put a schedule together was, and some of the high school people that were on our, on our committee said, hey, this might be a concern if you get locked into having this just at this particular time period. So I think one of the nice things about it is that it can be, can be shifted around based on the need. Yep.
Any others, Kathy? Okay, that sounds great. Well, I'm going to go to Tricia because I know you have a few.
Okay, well, so do I. So first of all, I want to thank everyone. I know you've put in, as Dr. Wall said, tons of brain power, tons of time. It's an age group that's near and dear to my heart, although when my kids, own kids are going through, I'm not quite sure why, but, but I survived, and so did they. So when I ask them these questions, I'm checking through some of the things you've just answered in presentation form, but I apologize if I dip into the kind of the management, the hows and whens, but I really want to get my mind around all this information you just The core classes first. Core classes, if you take out the minutes, and I think Pam had a question to this, it looks like students, if I read this right, are spending less time in core classes than they are current, or will in your proposal than they, than they are right now, is like about 30 minutes per week or something like that, is that correct? I wondered if how your, how the committee looked at that, and I'm assuming seeing some benefits as far as the flexible schedule and how that can balance that?
And I'm going to ask if you do go to the mic because it, we're recording, and if you don't, we can't pick up on it. And our APs and principals can be a part of this Q and A too, so I invite you to join them at the podium so our teachers can take a little breath. And you guys did a great job.
They did.
But we've got, the middle schools and assistant principals were a part of this the whole time too, so excellent question.
Great question in regard to the number of minutes. If you do look at technically speaking, the number of minutes, there would be a decrease. However, the committee had some really great discussion about because we would have extended blocks of time in addition to the core-plus time, there would be flexibility to make sure we were covering the information in a more productive way, also knowing that we would be limiting the number of transitions. So for example, a warm-up activity or certain things that take time every day in our current schedule would occur in a different way under a block. We also feel that the time just will be better spent as a result of having more flexibility into that time with core-plus. That's a great option for reteach so that our teachers can bring kids in that need additional time, where right now, they're really struggling to get through a class period just to cover the material. This would allow teachers just more flexibility to do that in a more responsive way to student need. And then on top of that, what core-plus time allows us to do is oftentimes throughout the school year, we have to do push-in services into class periods. For example, next month, we're beginning to our, schedule our students. That occurs during core time. So for example, during science classes in January, our counselors will kind of take over science for several days at a time to schedule our students. What this proposed schedule would allow is for our counselors to do that during core-plus time, and we would ultimately be gaining instructional time by not having to do as many push-in services during our core classes. So we feel the benefit of a schedule like this would outweigh the technical speaking minutes.
Okay, thank you. Another area under classes, I know that sometimes we struggle with those, especially math students that are several years ahead, and where to provide that instruction, and wondered if the committee looked at that as far as if that instruction would then be able to be held at the middle school or, or the transportation to the high school since the schedule, you know, kind of aligns better with the high school on that?
I don't think that issue is contingent upon a schedule. As far as whatever kind of day we follow, we're going to meet the needs of those students. It would align very well with what the students are doing at the high school now, and would still allow them the opportunity. You know, if the number of students at the middle school level is large enough, we would be able to provide it within this structure at our school, but if it continues to be half a dozen, eight students, and it makes more sense for them to go to the high school, we would still be able to do that in this structure. We wanted to ensure that we weren't moving backwards, certainly in that area, and that students would still have that opportunity.
Okay, thanks, because it sounds like it's, it is giving you much more flexibility on just whatever the need might be. On electives, and maybe you can talk me through it, a little bit as far as going through the history, offering world language, and then mandatory world language, sixth through eighth, and now having it as an option, and also, let's say, like Spanish language versus Spanish one, what's the difference there? Well, I'm hitting everybody.
It's a good team.
It is a great team, and I had the pleasure of being on the World Language Program Evaluation Committee as well. So I spent part of last year with the World Language Committee researching best practices, which I know that presentation has already been made to you guys. So you saw one of our key findings was that the delivery of the Level One language at the middle school really needs to mirror the delivery of the Level One language at the high school. And so, but basically what we're doing isn't working. So, and one thing that was really cool for me, because I'm also fortunate enough to be on the World Language Textbook Adoption Committee this year, and we were discussing this and the possible shift in classes, and we have students on that committee, and one is a seventh grader taking German at Carmel Middle, and we talked about, you know, you had to make this choice of your language your sixth-grade year, which kids have had to do the last few years, and what would, what do you think would have been different had you had the opportunity to take a little bit of time in Spanish and a little bit of time in French and a little bit of time in German? And his face lit up and he was so excited, he's like, oh my gosh, I've had that opportunity to explore a little bit, to learn about the culture or to learn about the language. So I knew what I was really getting into, because in the past, we have had exploratory world language classes where kids could dabble a little bit and find out a little bit about each of the languages, and unfortunately, that went away a few years ago and is a great loss, I think we would all agree, across the middle school and especially backed up by the findings of the World Language Program Evaluation Committee. So it was excited, exciting to hear the students be excited about the possibility of having a chance to be exposed to different languages before they have to make that final choice their eighth-grade year.
So for example, Spanish language is an exploratory, and Spanish one is Level One Spanish?
Right, that will mirror what the delivery of a freshman would take at the high school. That's a Level One.
Oh, okay, cool. Could you speak a little more on core-plus? I'm a little, I'm still a little fuzzy on if it can be used reliably, let's say, as an SRT time to that reteach and things, or, you know, let's say if it's, if it's flexible time, then how can a student rely on that time, or I know at the high school, you know, to make your dental appointments at that time, you know, that kind of thing?
Sure. I think one of the key differences between SRT and core-plus is that at the high school, SRT students make a decision, oftentimes about how they'll use that time and what their needs are. With the core-plus model, the team teachers will be making that decision. When they're meeting to collaborate and having that time together as, as team teachers, they'll be able to identify who are those students that they need to pull back together, who maybe are struggling in a particular content area, have some reteaching during that time while other students are getting extensions or moving on in other class areas. And so rather than students just looking at it as a block of time where every other day, they have a block that they get to choose what they're going to do, the team teachers will be orchestrating, oh, I need to re-meet with this class because they fell a little bit behind or they're struggling with it, so I want my block four to come back during core-plus, so everybody will meet with their block four during that time. Or they could split it out. I mean, the flexibility allows to say, hey, I need to see this group of kids for 30 minutes, and we'll do a couple of rotations within that core-plus time just to reemphasize. You know, we talked a great deal about that being a time for those interdisciplinary units, for teams to be using some of our large group instructional areas, the media center to be pulling together those science and math concepts, or social studies and, and language arts, or however they're working interdisciplinary, to have that time to do so, that core-plus could provide that opportunity.
Okay, thank you. That was a really good explanation about the student-based decision-making at the high school level.
I'm going to, I have another core-plus question, since I have the core-plus people here. I'm just going to piggyback and ask a couple of questions. Is there going to be some type of set curriculum for that course, focusing on any type of organizational skills, note-taking skills, some of the Avid, I mean, the Avid seems like such a wonderful program at the high school, and I know it is taught in the middle school, and somebody touched upon in 2016, '17, we might be doing more with Avid, but until we get to that point, those fundamental skills would be good for all middle school students. Are we going to approach teaching some of those skills in this core-plus, or how are we, how can we utilize that time?
And as teams have opportunities and they identify those needs, they'll be able to work closely with our student services, with our counselors, with our social workers, and say, hey, we need to do something more with organizational skills with our team. What either can you provide us that we can give to them, or can you come in and do a 45-minute session? We'll have our whole team go to the LGI room during that core-plus time, and those are some of the things where we're talking about the minutes of, are we losing instructional time? Those things are taking place naturally anyway now, but we think we can be more intentional and provide those sorts of skills, you know, and if down the road, we have an opportunity to pursue something like Avid, I think it's something for us to continue to look at because we agree those are skills that are essential to be taught, and this will give us an opportunity without a specific mandated curriculum that this is what every team's doing, but for teams to identify, hey, these are things our kids need to work on, let's address that.
Okay, I really only have one other area, and it's financial, and I sent a couple emails, and Dr. Wall was very kind to, I guess, to hold a core-plus with me and work me through this. But a few years ago, 2010, going through some budget cuts, we looked at teaming as it was in the middle school then, slightly different than your proposal, and looking at eliminating some 15 FTEs at that point and, but reducing class size, and this would be a cost of about 780,000, or savings of $780,000. With the passing of the referendum, we kept those 15 FTEs, added almost six, and it did reduce class size, it did slightly increase teacher load, the number of students teachers are in charge of, but it did reduce class size. It sounds like with this, the projection is a cost-neutral, it's just the use of those FTEs, so I appreciate that information. But there is the slide that says it will slightly increase class size. Now, teachers look at class size and caseload, parents look at class size. So if someone, whatever branch of the team, could just speak a little bit on that, 31, 32 being an average, so we know that there'll be some below that and we'll know there'll, you know, there could be some close to 40. Where are we now on that? How will that, what kind of data has come into that that the committee looked at?
We didn't see anything approaching 40, so I don't know where that came from.
Okay. I don't, I'm just taking, because you, no, if you have an average of 31, 32, it's never exactly, you know, every class 31, 32.
Correct.
You'd have a 27 and a...
We're not breathing on 40, though.
Okay, I don't want to spread rumors, so, because I don't know of any, but I'm just saying. But what was the data to look at that overall picture of knowing that class size is going to inch up slightly?
The idea was, and one of the, the priorities or one of the things that has to happen is that we'll go ahead and redistrict and allow us to average out the school sizes for all three middle schools. The also, the other idea is that the student load per teacher while class level will go up slightly, the student load per teacher will not. It also allows for students and teachers to really delve into academics. You know, today, we do 53 minutes and we move on, and, and while we do a great job at that, this schedule and this type of structure is going to allow us to reach kids in a much greater level than we ever have before. While it is true there will be a couple more kids in each classroom, the truth is that I believe that the teachers and the students will be a much greater benefit because of the extended class time, because of the core-plus, because of the idea that our 11, 12, 13, and 14-year-olds actually are known by teachers instead of every 53 minutes, move on. So those relationships and those positive relationships that will be built, while again, the court, the classes will be a little bit larger, all of those benefits far outweigh what we are currently doing.
Thank you very much, because I know that there'll be people that will, and parents and staff that will re-watch this and dissect this, and I think it's important for them to hear that, especially with the professional development on how to use the block time and to how to even connect even better with these kids, that it'll be a really interactive, great use of time, and I think that was wonderful to put out there. So I am done with my questions, but again, I want to thank everyone because this was a huge chunk of effort, and I appreciate it. Thanks.
Pam? Yes, thank you, and again, you all have put in an excellent amount of work here, and it was evident in your presentation and all the information that you've presented to all of us. I do have a couple of questions. First of all, the school day will not change, is that correct? It'll start the same and end the same?
Correct.
Okay. Also, the listing of PE, and I asked this question of Dr. Wall, and I'm still not real clear on it, the listing of PE on your schedule, because you are listing your core classes and wellness as one of your core, why is it not listed as wellness?
Honestly, it just didn't really fit in the box.
Ah!
It was very simple.
PE was just so easy to center in there.
No, you did not.
No, you know.
Okay.
Did she do a better job?
Yeah.
It would still involve the same wellness program that we're running now.
Okay. Also, on your last slide, it says various, provide various course offerings so students are not forced to take a study hall. So my question is, are you offering study hall at all for students who need it, or will they have time to prepare on their own, or is core-plus going to be totally scheduled for the students and not, and they're not going to have time on their, by themselves?
So one of the things about our current schedule that is difficult, while we do provide study hall as an option for students, we found that unfortunately, the way the schedule, the complexity of the current schedule and how we... and how we schedule classes, we do have a pretty significant chunk of students that aren't able to fit the classes they truly want into their schedule. And so then we don't have really any other options but to put them in the one and only class that it fits, and that tends to be study hall. A lot of our research talked about that it's so important for kids to have exploratory options, lots of different options, broad in nature, so that they could really start to discover their interests within the school setting before moving into the high school where they, you know, may need to specialize or make certain decisions about their courses. And so our current recommendation would be to utilize the Core Plus time for those study skills. We think that our students will, their needs will be better met with that time because the teachers that will be working directly with them are the teachers that see them for their core classes. So oftentimes right now, our study hall teachers may not even know their students in their study hall classes. They wouldn't have knowledge about how necessarily they're being productive in class or not, just some of those nuances. And so with this recommended model, we feel that our teachers will be able to truly help assist students in their study skills because they know the students and they know what their needs are. I think the other piece that's really beneficial is when we, when we talk about 6-12 alignment, what this Core Plus time allows us to do in relation to study hall or study skills is it really helps us as teachers, as Mark explained, help the students understand where their need is so that when they transition into the high school and it becomes more of a student-driven time with SRT, they have had three years of interactions during that Core Plus time to help guide where their needs might be so that ultimately they would be making better decisions for their time in that SRT time when they transition to the high school.
Okay. So teachers will be aware that Core Plus is not a prep time?
Correct, yes.
Okay. With this schedule, and I know you're going to have professional development on the block schedules, will you be inviting high school teachers who have been successful in doing block scheduling for years to come over and do professional development for you?
Yeah, that's a good question. I think, I think in the years that the high school has done block scheduling, I think we would be missing an opportunity if we didn't try to vertically align that on the 6-12 and calling on the high school colleagues to come over and help and maybe do visitations, possibly do video modeling, a number of different ways that we will be able to connect professional development in our buildings to the high school level. I think a lot of the work that they've done is excellent work. And there's, and I think that we would be looking for those people that would be willing to help us kind of build our model at the middle school level, kind of everything we're talking about preparing kids for high school with what they're getting ready to go into.
Because you've got your models right here in the school system, so why not take advantage of those?
Yeah, and currently, we do have, we do have teachers at the middle school level teaching 106 minutes in the humanities model as well. So we do have some teachers that understand that concept of block and extended time. And we have, do have teachers in our own buildings doing that right now as well.
Okay.
And as you know, Pam, elementary teachers are the masters of teaching blocks.
Two hours.
Well, I mean, they have blocks of literacy and, you know, Ryan does it every day and you did it every day at OPE.
Yes, I did.
And the interesting part of that that came out in the discussions is you look at our students and what they're accustomed to, our middle level was the only place they weren't getting those kind of enriching, extended blocks of instruction.
True.
They get them in elementary, they get them in a high school, but we were not doing that at a middle level. So once you really look at that from a student's perspective, that's the only level they weren't getting that kind of opportunity to go really into the content.
Okay, a couple more, is that okay?
Please, go ahead.
With your interdisciplinary work of content areas, and you might have two or more teachers teaching the same curriculum or the same area of study, how are you going to be assigning grades to your students when maybe a science teacher is doing the same thing or teaching the same thing as an, as an English teacher is teaching?
Let me clarify the question. If I'm teaching a project-based learning unit in which I may be, right now, for example, we're planning a math-science, all seventh-grade level project-based learning unit at Creekside Middle School. And if I understand the question correctly, the students, we're making it happen with our current schedule, but the idea of being on a, on a team in which I can readily be able to flex the time and that math and science teacher may be able to work together. As far as the assessment is concerned on that, the way that we structure our rubrics are in a way in which I am assessing my content through that rubric and the math teacher, the language arts teacher, or even the social studies teacher is assessing their content standards through a rubric. And in one of the things, at least if I can speak about project-based learning, is we also have an opportunity to assess a lot of the 21st century skills that is a part of, is a part of that project-based model. So as far as assessment is concerned, I think that would be an area in which we can continue professional development within, within our schools, but...
And that would be a collaboration time period when we could talk about how...
Oh, yeah.
All that.
That is very exciting, yes. Right now, we're meeting, tomorrow we have a meeting after school with some of our community members that are going to help us out with this project. It would be awesome to be able to, hey, can you come in at 9:30? This is when our collaborative time period is.
Okay.
And meet with us to co-plan, so.
And another question I have is with the statewide testing, that we have no idea what they're going to be doing with it yet, how is this going to work into your schedule eventually in the, in the spring? During your Core Plus time?
You want me?
Yeah, you can, go ahead.
Not knowing what we'll do in 2016 with the statewide testing, basically it will, we'll have a testing schedule like we do now, I'm assuming, because it will be, we'll be using the computers. We'll need to make sure we have, have the kids go through it and so we'll go on to a testing schedule during that time.
Okay. Gosh, I think I'm done. Thank you. Mr. Phillips, do you have some questions?
Thank you. Not a question, just a comment. I want to say that the process that you folks have gone through and that I assume Dr. Wall has led us to follow is, I think, just an amazingly good process. Particularly, I'm thinking of the research-based aspect. You folks have obviously done your homework. What I really appreciate is that I'm seeing teachers, as well as administrators, coming together to sort of, to figure this out. It may be that we'll find some things that aren't exactly perfect with this approach as we go forward, but with this kind of process, we'll figure it out and we'll make the adjustments. So thank you, Dr. Wall.
Actually, I have one question.
Thank you.
Quickly.
Go ahead.
Because it bounces right, it bounces right off that, is this committee, are we planning to keep it together? Or what's our going forward as far as, you know, looking at how it goes next year and tweaking or not tweaking?
Our thoughts on that, and we, this was, the team presented this at discussion to the association last week, also had a presentation at a principal's meeting. So this has been getting some appropriate kicking of the tires, so to speak. As we look at unrolling professional development out for next, the second semester and for the summer, we haven't crossed that bridge yet, but yes, I would suggest, just as we do with any other curriculum area, we look at how the implementation is going in next year and keep a cadre of this group together to meet, to look at how things are being implemented. I think that would be a wise thing to do. And as you can see by the group standing before you with teachers and administrators, if, those are all the questions, I'm going to make a few comments, but I don't want to cut anybody off. Well, then you guys go ahead.
I really don't have any more questions. I just, I'm so excited to hear all of you be excited about this. As a diehard educator myself, I mean, I can just, the creative juices are always flowing with what you could possibly do with this. And having two sons who have gone through middle school in Carmel Clay under two entirely different circumstances, I might add. One was very fortunate to go through Clay when they were doing the three-day regular and the Thursday and Friday were block and they had the sixth grade exploratory language and all that good stuff. Had a wonderful experience in middle school. The other one was not so fortunate. He was the first group that had to pick a foreign language in sixth grade and that didn't turn out real well for us. But I'm just excited because you are working together and you're excited about what you're doing and it's just, it just promises a really bright future for us. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, I just have two quick questions. First question, language arts and social studies are going to be taught separately, whereas now we currently have the humanities course for the sixth graders, which I have to say, I love that big block and my children did as well. So I'm excited about the whole block scheduling at the middle school. Had you given any thought to combining the two for seventh grade and eighth grade? Or do you think having these separate, larger models or parsing them out to separate courses is, I don't know. Could anybody speak to that?
We talked a lot about, currently, the humanities class offered at the sixth grade level is a real great example of interdisciplinary planning and alignment of curriculum. And so we have talked a lot about how this current structure would allow for even more interdisciplinary planning to go on in addition to the humanities areas. So we feel that the block, in addition to the flexibility, in addition to the collaboration time between subject areas, will allow for mirrored experiences to humanities to occur. Not in a formalized curriculum manner such as humanities, but in a responsive and, you know, creative way as well, so.
Thank you. My second question, my children missed the whole teaming at the middle school, but I've heard all sorts of wonderful stories about teaming. Could you speak to how this particular model might differ from what parents might have experienced before? Or will it just be the same? I don't know.
A little bit of the difference will be wellness will be part of the team. It'll be a five-member team. Also, the, the idea that it is the same in, in the social-emotional part where students are going to be able to be known by those adults. And I think that's the most important part of middle school, for middle school kids. It also allows, once again, for those interdisciplinary units. You know, right now, and Chris was talking about science and math working together at the seventh grade level. They only do that because they're meeting at 7:00 in the morning or 3:30 in the afternoon. This is going to allow those interdisciplinary units any time that the standards show that it would best benefit children. So I will tell you, and you see it on our faces, we are so excited for this. And it's going, we believe as a group, that we're moving in the right direction.
After I make my comment? I just wanted to thank each and every one of you for the time and effort that you put into presenting this very exciting research-based model. Like I said, I've got children that are currently there, children that are coming into there. So it is really exciting for me as parent, as well as the, you know, other 15,000 families out there. So thank you very much. And yes, Ms. Pam?
Yes, and I'm just very glad to see teaming coming back to the middle school. I was rather upset when it left the middle school the last time and for you to come back and say that this is best practice in our middle school right now, I think is fabulous. So thank you.
And I just want to make a few closing remarks before we let these wonderful people go for the evening. But when we came back together for one of the last, you know, I stayed out of it most of the time, introduced it, and I have full confidence in the committee structure where we have our best and brightest teachers with our best and brightest administrators doing the work of presenting what they think is best practice for students in the classroom. We came back together at Carmel Middle School just to kind of get a follow-up on this. And I was waiting for a yippee, but I don't know. Being an old middle school teacher myself, I could definitely teach in this model. And, you know, Tom knows from the first time I talked to him about this, when he told me that we got rid of teaming. I think I, what was my response, Tom?
What were you guys thinking?
And what did you say when we came back together and we were sitting having a planning meeting? What are we, what are we bringing back to Carmel?
So we're bringing the middle back to Carmel. It's been missing and it's time to bring it back for our kids.
And when you sit with teachers, that's a yippee. When you sit with teachers and administrators who work with middle school-age kids every day and have, having done that myself and having been in the buildings last year, especially during prep period meetings, you can really feel that day. It's hard to explain that day, but you can feel it. And I sat in all three buildings and I think the teachers know what I mean. You can feel that pace. Even today at Clay Middle School, they had their soiree and we were over there, Roger and I, and they, we were talking to some people and boom, they had to go. I mean, you can feel the pace of that day. You can feel the pace of the other buildings, elementary and high school, but not like a middle school. And for the energy expended, and I call it like the constant state of rush that you feel, I, this is going to be refreshing. I mean, the sad thing is that this can't start second semester, to be blunt, because we believe this to be the best thing for our kids. We used to say in Ferdinand to this one old guy, you can't do it and then he would figure out how to do it. So we'd throw down the gauntlet. But the other thing that is really, I think, important about this process, this group would do their work and they present their findings and the overarching priorities. And we had, I think, some very candid meetings, planning meetings administratively about this and with, with the middle school principals and the assistant principals. And we start each meeting with, what are the overarching priorities? How can those be met? And there were certain, you know, a couple maturation's that came through that did not have the passion for middle school on them. So we didn't take those. So I commend the group for sticking to their best practice guns and saying, we think this is what's best for our kids. The piece that shouldn't be lost here, and it was mentioned a couple times, is the 6-12 articulation piece. The opportunities that we will now be presenting for our kids and teachers for 6-12 articulation, I think, will be unprecedented in aligning not only the PLC community with the high school, but the ability for us to have had high school teachers on this committee advising, and administrators advising how the block works, what works in the block. Very candid conversations about that. And now then to be able to tap into that rich resource on how do you change how you deliver instruction and your standards in a block schedule from our very own teachers that have been doing it, not just for a few years, but for a significant amount of time, is a golden opportunity for us as a, as a district. 6-12 articulation pieces that I think will be really benefit to our community. You heard social-emotional learning a lot today from the group. And I have no doubt that the teachers and the administrators standing over there care deeply about the kids they see every day and are concerned about not only the academic performance but the wellness of the kids that come into the buildings. This is an opportunity for them to really go back to collaborative interdisciplinary teaming where they can then define schools within a school again. And in that environment, you can sit and talk and plan rather than about curriculum, and we all know curriculum's vital and the standards, but talk about the needs of the kids, individual. kids, individual by name, as the principals and their teachers have said this evening, getting to know their needs, because, as we all know in teaching, no one really cares too much about what we know until they know how much we care. We can do that again with this model. And I commend all of you for doing that, I commend all of you for your efforts every day, tomorrow, today, on the benefit of these middle school kids. It's a passion to be a middle school teacher, and it's a gift. So, thank you so much, and we're very excited, and looking forward to the professional development to unroll this thing. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Got to have a yippee, though. There you go. Well done.
It's exciting, isn't it?
Amen. That would be good.
Moving right along, we have board member reports, and I believe Mrs. Hackett has a report she'd like to share.
I have a very brief report. Leila and I attended the ISBA School Law Seminar last Friday, seems like three or four weeks ago, but it was just last Friday. Very knowledgeable speakers, and a couple of the topics they hit on, student conduct investigations, concussions and sudden cardiac arrest in line of the new Indiana law, disproportionality in student discipline across the nation, and the view of the Office of Civil Rights and how they view or investigate or work with school districts with that, on that aspect, school district lawsuits and a review of steps from start to finish, if and when you find yourself in one, and avoiding defamation, even in well-intended communications. I think Leila and I would probably agree that most notable in what we learned were some possible policy tweaks. So Leila, part of the policy committee, was taking great notes for different things to look at, either policies that we might need to tweak, or that we already have are just ones we need to get on the book, but it was more of a policy area. Also, I just want to say that representatives from our own legal counsel team were there, so if there's any need of, you know, working together, they were there hearing the same information and a part of it. So, it was a nice day. Thanks.
Thank you, Tricia. And Pam, you have?
Yes. I just have a short report. Just wanted to let the board know that Dr. Wall and I have sent out the legislative priorities to all state representatives and senators, and have sent a letter to our personal representatives and senators to ask them to meet with us about our legislative priorities. And so far, we've had three respond, so we've had conversations with Representative Tor, Senator Kinley, we talked to today, which I thought was a very productive meeting, and we've met with Representative Shabely, who is brand-new, was just elected last week to take Steve Braun's position, and so she's very excited to be a representative and advocating for public schools. I've found these conversations to be very informative, and I think we've opened their eyes to some possibilities as well, so just wanted to let you know.
And if I might, we've personally invited them to the Rise Above the Mark showing, January 21st, that's being jointly showed and embraced by the Teachers Association, CCEA, the Foundation, CEF, and Board of Education and Administration of Carmel Clay Schools. And it's been met with positive interest.
You would like to come? So I was excited.
Well, thank you for meeting on our behalf. Any other reports or comments? Okay, our only announcement, really, is we have, we'll be swearing in board members at our next meeting that we just approved, tonight's meeting, January 12th. With that, I hope everybody has a very safe and wonderful holiday season with your families. Please take a break. We should hope everybody takes a break. You've all worked extremely hard. And with that, thank you very much for joining us, and thank you for all your hard work in developing such a great model. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.